My name is Joseph Curlin. I'm the superintendent of Parks and Forestry for the city of Sheboygan Department of Public Works. And tonight, we're mainly going to be talking about private trees, your resident trees. But before that, I'm going to just take a minute to thank Mayor Mike Vanderstein for being here tonight. Elder person Scott Lewandowski for this area is here tonight. And later, for some questions afterwards, I also have my lead man with the city tree crew. You probably have a better chance of seeing him sometimes than I do because he's out there with the crews working on city trees. So very shortly, the city in 2009 did an inventory, the whole county did actually. And the big thing behind it was taking account of ash trees as well as other trees. But at that time, we had a count in the city for city trees of about 5,000 ash trees. Now, these are trees that are street trees and some public, some of the more popular merk trees. Now, a street tree is considered a tree between the street and the sidewalk. So those are the city's responsibility for the most part. When new trees are planted, newly planted, we do ask the adjacent homeowner to try and water those trees. So we do ask for cooperation in that. Broken branches, things like that, we do look forward to people calling us if they think it's dead. We'll follow up on that too with phone calls. So we have about 5,000 trees, give or take a little bit, that we have to deal with. Now, we did see this coming. In 2015, I did write a grant to the DNR and received an urban forestry grant. And with that money that we received, we are writing, we are working with a forestry consultant to write our tree management plans and tree planting inventories, so sites that we can plant. And they'll specifically spell out where are we going to plant what types of trees. So we have a lot of work to do in the forestry department. We have a crew of basically four people full-time. And they do everything with those trees in public right of ways in the parks, from planting to trimming to elevating and removals. So a lot of work to be done and a lot of planting at this time for us. So as far as ash trees are concerned, we figure we're probably within the third, fourth year that they're actually been in the city. The next four years or so are going to be a little light at first, but then really ramp up because from everything I've been told by year eight, and this will probably be covered, they just start dying. So probably be really without ash trees by year eight. We have decided, and what we're working towards, towards our management plan that we're still working on, but hopefully done in a month, is that we're going to start treating, probably we're going to try to treat half those trees, so about 2,500 trees, that we're going to pick the good ones, the ones that are, you know, that are still healthy, that are larger, that are doing us a lot of, a lot of good in many ways. Those are the trees that we're going to treat. And again, we're figuring probably about half. Bill's probably going to be covering that tonight also, so you're going to learn more about the treating process. That's just a little of what we're getting as a city going to start doing. You'll probably start hearing a lot more of it. We've got to bring our management plan to the city council and you'll see that in the next, over the course of the next month or so. But if you have questions about street trees that are adjacent to you or someplace in the city, when you call the Department of Public Works, you're probably going to end up with me or Kenny over there. This time, I'm going to introduce Bill McNeath. Bill is a DNR forest health specialist out of Plymouth. So he is the man that we called when Kenny took down an elm tree, ash tree, sorry, ash tree, and thought, hmm, something's kind of weird here. Because we've been watching for it for the last three, four years. And Kenny was right. So it was confirmed that it did have emerald ashbore. And since then, we've really, really been looking hard. We've actually found it in two different, two other places. So three places in the city. And if you read that press release, you'll know where those are. So at this time, Bill is going to talk to you about your private trees.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I do have some business cards which I forgot to put out on the table. If you call the DNR office in Plymouth and ask for the bug guy, you will get me. So that's the easy way to find me. My job these days is largely to work with the detection and management of emerald ashbore and tell communities like Sheboygan the bad news that the sample that they, they have is the dreaded insect. I cover the southeast part of the state. And if you have questions about this insect or others, feel free to give me a call or take a look at the DNR website. What I will do is talk about the biology of the insect and what it does to your trees and your community's trees. And then some information for you about whether you want to treat the trees, as Joe just mentioned, for the city's trees, or remove the trees and plant another species that is not susceptible to this insect. Back to the origins of the insect, we are dealing with an Asian insect that's native to Eastern Asia. And it hitchhiked its way here into North America near the Detroit airport in one of the Detroit suburbs, probably in the late 80s or early 90s, most likely inside some solid packing materials that they use inside those big shipping containers to brace whatever is inside. And the tree ring analysis that was later done said that the trees were already dying in Michigan by 1994. And if, as you'll see from some of the pictures, that probably meant that this insect arrived in North America in the late 80s or early 90s. And the late 80s by now is pushing 30 years ago. So it's not a recent arrival anymore, but it is a fairly recent arrival here in the city. Back at the, back then in the 1990s, ash in the Midwest was having all sorts of problems. There were disease issues, drought issues, bacterial issues, and nobody had heard of this insect. And even in Eastern Asia, this is a fairly rare, little-known insect, like we have fairly rare, little-known insects here. But little did we know, back then, here was this hidden insect lurking underneath the bark, contributing to the death of these trees or even being the primary cause. But it would be another five years or so until we found it. And back then, much like over in Michigan, what we did here when a tree died, it gets cut down and you take it up to the lake. Or you give it to your brother-in-law and away it goes halfway across the state. And unknowingly, we were spreading this bug all over the Midwest and we didn't even know it was here. So it's kind of a, in hindsight, it's, it was an unfortunate event that happened. As you can see on the map, it's native to Eastern Asia, all the way from Taiwan and China up into some very cold parts of Russia. So it can tolerate very cold temperatures and we, we get those here in the upper Midwest. I was working for the DNR back in 2002. And I remember that first email that they sent around from the Department of Agriculture saying that they had found this new green insect that people weren't really familiar with. And they, they had to actually send samples all the way to Slovakia or Serbia or some Eastern European country to figure out what this insect is. It was that obscure. And in 2002, it was found in Michigan. And then within a year or so, it had been found at quite a few sites in Michigan and other states like Ohio and Indiana and Ontario were already finding this insect. And the writing was really on the wall that it was so widespread that we were not likely to be able to get rid of it. Ironically, by the time it was first found near Detroit, it was already present up in Houghton or up in, up in the Kiwanau. That's quite a distance to move an insect before you even know you have an insect. So it was in quite a few places before we even knew it was here. In 2008, we first found it near Newburgh. It's a little town between West Bend and Port Washington at a rural property. And we did some tree ring analysis and it was already here by 2004. So by the time it got introduced, four, at least four years later, we, we finally found it. And because of this lag between introduction and detection, it's likely that we have a whole bunch of other infestations here in this state that we have just not found yet. Like two months ago, Sheboygan's infestation was here, but we just didn't know it yet. So undoubtedly, there's more, Sheboygan County undoubtedly has more communities that have the bug. We just have not found it yet because it's not an easy bug to find early on, as you'll see. Last year, or in 2014, there was also some bad news that this insect was found in a species of ornamental tree up here called white fringe tree. This is a very white, flowery tree in the spring that's not native, but, but it's planted as an ornamental tree. And this insect breeds in it. It makes the same S-shaped galleries that you'll see on these samples. And it does, it does just fine. Fortunately, we don't have it up here as a native species, so the impact will be lower. At this point, the insect has been found in much of southern Sheboygan County. So if you're here from outside of the city and live down there in Cedar Grove, Ouzburg, places like that, you, Random Lake, you have this insect already. It's, it's been down there for a number of years. It was first found down there in 2014. A couple of weeks ago, it was confirmed here in the city, as Joe mentioned. And we also found it in the town of Sheboygan Falls in a little enclave that is surrounded by the city of Sheboygan Falls. So undoubtedly, if you live in one of those two communities, you, you have this pest already at some level of infestation. So the information I will present here does apply to other people from outside of the city, if any of you are here. It was first found in Random Lake in the town of Holland in the summer of 2014. And even then, you could see that the trees at these spots were showing some decline. They are probably long since dead, since then. As you'll see on the map here, Sheboygan County is part of the quarantine area in red, which means that items that could spread the insect, like ash firewood, nursery stock, logs that are cut down, cut down and unprocessed, need to stay in the red area with the possible, or with the exception of some of these counties, which are actually regulated by a gypsy moth quarantine. So if you keep it in any of the surrounding counties, that is, is legal to, to move ash material, although it is discouraged because many of those areas do not know they have EAB yet. Now, emerald ashbore is a big deal in North America. It is probably at this point, the most devastating invasive insect that we have. Many of you will remember Dutch elm disease back in the 60s and 70s and 80s, came out, came and took your nice big elms. This is probably going to be at least as devastating as that over the long term. We have a lot of ash here in many of the communities because after those elm trees died, what did they plant? They planted ash. It grows well in the cities. It's cheap. It's, it's easily available. And they planted a lot of it. And now we're, we're paying the price for planting so much of one species. So as you'll see later on, I encourage you to mix up your species if you buy additional species to plant in your, in your property. Now, here in Wisconsin, we have four ash species, white, green, black, and a couple stands of blue ash, which is more of a tree species native to places like Indiana or Ohio or Kentucky. We have a couple of spots here, so it's not really common or, there are a few ornamentals planted, but it's, it's not a very common tree species. And they're ornamental varieties. So if you go down to the tree nursery and buy an ash tree, it is likely to be a derivative of one of these species and therefore it would be susceptible to emerald ashbore. Now hopefully, the nurseries are not selling ash anymore because there's really no demand for it. Partly because it will be more than 99% fatal to ash trees. So of every thousand ash trees here, less than 10 of them will survive. And it turns out that in the early years, they were just seeing literally every ash tree die because the ash trees that you buy at the tree nursery are largely clones or very closely related. So if there's little resistance, there's just little resistance because the genetic variation is not there like it is in the ash trees in the woods. Here in Wisconsin, we have an estimated 834 million ash trees, more than an inch in diameter, so a little bigger than the knuckle on your thumb. And that's how small of a tree an ashbore can infest. I've actually seen it. It's a common tree here in Wisconsin. 20% of the street trees and 12% of the urban trees are ash and will be susceptible to this insect. And as you can see in the picture, that tree is infested. So how do, how do you determine where a population is early on if the trees all look like that? It's, it's very difficult with, even if you climb that tree and peel some branches, it is not easy to find. And that's partly why there's this lag time between it being introduced into an area and somebody confirms that, yes, it is there. And usually, that's three to five years. So as Joe mentioned, the pest has likely been here in the city for at least three, maybe five years. And it will become a greater problem over time. Now, at first, the mortality or the impacts on a community are fairly low. We have the two spots here in the city. The trees are showing some signs, but they're still alive. Most people would drive right or walk right past the tree, not know it's infested until you came to this meeting. But that will change. And as you can see on this graph, the, the, there's what's known as a death curve, where the infestation starts off slow and starts off slow, but it's building because each of those female beetles is laying 50 to 100 eggs a year. And the mortality starts dying or starts increasing. And eventually, the trees start dying and increasing numbers. And then you get this very rapid death of most of the ash trees in the community within a few years. So some of the communities down in the Milwaukee area are in this very rapid increase. Sheboygan is probably down in here somewhere yet. So as Joe mentioned, it probably will be three, four, five, six years until you see this widespread death here in the community. Now that gives you a little time to prepare to treat your trees, as I'll discuss later, or to remove them before they die. Now, what typically happens when that mortality really takes off is the city gets overwhelmed. They have limited staff, limited funding, yet all of these trees are dying all over town. They are starting to fall apart. They're dropping branches on vehicles, sidewalks, picnic tables. And that's a hazard that has to be dealt with, often at the expense of other things like tree pruning or say, new vehicles or paving a street. Neighbors can start getting very upset at each other because your neighbor's branches start falling on your car. Things like that happen and neighbors don't like it when their, their vehicle gets damaged. You can't, you do see examples of trees and branches falling on vehicles. If you go on YouTube, you'll, you'll find some videos of, of things happening. It may not be common to have a major catastrophe, but it does happen. In terms of ecology, the ecosystem is altered in the natural areas and typically invasive plants, you may have heard of things like buckthorn or garlic mustard or canary grass, often take over and that, that site, especially if it's on a wet, on wet ground, might actually be lost to forest. And that has happened in other states in some places. Now, from a state perspective, we were fortunate to learn from Michigan's failures and were fortunate that they got the pest first. They also now have a hemlock insect that we can learn from their, their experience. If you remember the gypsy moth, when it was blowing up here back in the mid 2000s, we could learn from Michigan's experience. So we're, we're lucky that we have them across the lake. And they got this insect first and they, and really the experimentation of how, how to deal with this insect and trying to get rid of it happened over there in Indiana and Ohio first. And typically, what the plan was, was to cut all of the ash trees within half a mile of where that known infestation was. Now, as I showed you a couple of slides ago, how do you find the true edge of the infestation to cut the trees down in trees that look like that? You don't. Now, in hindsight, it's, it's pretty obvious. Back then, this was a new thing and we were, we were trying to get rid of it with the information we had. Now ultimately, that failed everywhere. It was tried because you, you would, you would cut all the trees within half a mile and then a year or two later, you'd find it a quarter mile down the road or 100 yards down the road. And it was too late to do anything. You just could not find the true edge of that infestation. And by the time we found emerald ashbore here, that was pretty obvious and nobody was trying to get rid of the insect anymore. We were moving on into dealing with it if we have it or preventing it from getting here if we don't have it yet. So what we do now as state government is regulate the items like the firewood and the nursery stock that could be spreading EAB into new areas. We do a lot of public education, all sorts of websites, brochures, meetings like this for the public. We try to find new ones or confirm new infestations, as we did here in Sheboygan. We manage the forests and that we are responsible for and encourage the private landowners to manage their forests with this insect in mind. And for communities, we do provide some competitive grant funding that they can apply for, for things like management plans or tree inventories to prepare for dealing with this insect. So I will show you some pictures if you've never seen these before. This is a neighborhood in Toledo, a very nice neighborhood, remind you of the nice elms that we used to have, you know, many years ago. They knew in 2006, this neighborhood was infested. Now, if you look at those trees, how many of you would think that those trees are infested? Probably none. But it, it was there and, and they knew that. Now, three years later, things have changed. Same street. So this is what ultimately is likely to happen here. Will it be five years from now? Will it be seven years? Will it be nine years? Remains to be seen. But ultimately, if the trees are not treated, this is what is going to happen to more than 99% of the ash trees here in the city. And this bug doesn't care if it's the city's trees or if it's the ash tree in your backyard. They are both very nice food for, for this insect. Now, we have had EAB here in this state long enough that we have our nice, our own pictures of dead trees. This is the Ryan Road truck stop in Oak Creek. And the insect was found there in 2009. And about three years later, you could see around the truck stop, the ash trees are, are dead. We have another good picture near Newburgh. This is about half a mile away from where it was initially found. And literally, within two years, that, that forested area went from having live-looking ash trees, at least when I flew over it with an airplane, to looking like this. And it looks even worse now. The mortality has spread a couple miles down the road. So that, that is what will happen when the ash is left alone and especially when it's abundant. The impacts are going to be dramatic on your property or your woods. In terms of the life cycle, it has the typical life cycle of a beetle. If you remember back to middle school biology, egg, larva, pupa, adult. This is, this is exactly that. The larvae are these inch, inch and a half long worms, as people call them, that tunnel around underneath the bark. And you'll notice that they have bell-shaped segments. So if you are playing around with your tree, which is an ash, if it's, if it's not an ash, all bets are off. But in an ash tree, if you see these bell-shaped segments and a larva that's about an inch, inch and a half, it is likely EAB. Those tunnel around underneath the bark of the tree and what they do is they cut off the tree's food and water supply. So you'll see, as I'll show you some pictures of, the tree is basically starving and suffocating at the, or dehydrating at the same time. When they're ready to pupate, they turn into a pupa in the, in the spring. And then it transforms into the adult beetle, which then chews its way out of the tree and flies to another tree or it may fly several miles to lay its eggs and the cycle repeats itself. The eggs are tiny. You, you really need to know what to look for and need a hand lens to do it. And then that tiny larva hatches, tunnels right down into the nutritious tissue called phloem, where all the sugars are, and the cycle starts again. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, each female beetle can lay 50 to 100 eggs. So the potential for very rapid population growth is here. People also miss the fact that it is smaller than a penny. So I put that picture in there to show you. That is, that's the actual size relative to a penny. So it's a pretty small insect, but like many insects, they make up for their size in just sheer numbers and that's how they have such a dramatic impact. Now, as I mentioned, the tunneling is cutting off the flow of food and water. And there's a characteristic S-shaped winding gallery. And there is, there is considerable variation. They often overlap each other, as you can see here. When you get very high populations, it looks like a bowl of spaghetti that you've tossed around, that the galleries just go everywhere. But that S-shaped winding is fairly distinctive in an ash tree. And this piece, this gallery here was from the original piece of wood that they took down not too far from here in the city. So that's Sheboygan's claim to fame in terms of EAB. What you'll see when the population and the tunneling has become big enough that it's actually starting to impact the tree, is that the canopy starts to thin and then die. So as you'll see here, the canopy's starting to die back and the leaves are small, they're kind of pale and yellowish. And you can just look at that tree and, and see that something is not right with that tree. And it's, it's usually a fairly distinctive thinning. Sometimes it happens, it happens in a year. Sometimes the trees linger on for several years. They thin a little each year and then they go. We've seen some place, some places where the, when the populations are high, the tree looks fine in August. And it's pretty clear that it's heavily infested during the winter when the woodpeckers hit it and it doesn't even leaf out the next year. Yes?
Do you want questions as you go or do you want us to wait till you're done?
If you have a question now, I will happily take it.
Can that tree be saved?
That tree, no. And I'll, I'll explain more later. By the time this thinning is this extensive, the tree's a goner. Usually, it's about 30% of the canopy. It looks like that. That's about the cutoff. Some say 30, some say 50. When it's 100%, it's too late to save. So this is, this is preventable here in the city. You, you are early on, so there should be very few trees as a proportion of the ash here in the city that will look like that this summer. It will build up over time, but there shouldn't be too many this year. Now, the dieback or the thinning starts up top and works its way down over one or more years. The easiest place for that little tiny larva to actually survive is up in the small branches. The pressure of the resin and the water pressure is just not as high up there. So this tree has probably been infested for at least two to three, more likely, three to five years before it got to that point. The year before, there might have been some dieback or it may have looked just fine. And until you see the tree leaf out in the spring, it's hard to predict how, how it will, how it will react. And typically, within four to six years of first being infested, they're on their last legs or they're already dead. Now, a tree under stress will react in a number of ways, one of which is the sprouting at the base of the tree or on the branches, or sorry, on the trunk. And that's a kind of a sign of distress, sort of a last gasp, but trying to stay alive. Now this, both of these can be due to other causes. So just because you have sprouting does not necessarily mean that you have EAB in your ash tree, but it, it is one of the symptoms of infestation. And just like when you go to the doctor and you think, he thinks you might have some kind of condition, one symptom alone often does not make a diagnosis, but several, several symptoms would lead to a diagnosis. What is more distinctive is the exit hole that is made by the adult beetle. If you look at the beetle face on, it actually looks D-shaped. So when the beetle develops underneath the bark and is chewing its way out of the tree, it is a little on the lazy side. It chews a D-shaped hole because that's how it can get out of the tree with the least amount of work. So we get these nice distinctive D-shaped holes, they, in various orientations. Sometimes it's sideways, sometimes it's upside down, sometimes it's right side up. But the D shape is fairly characteristic and distinctive. So if you see these in, in your ash trees, this is a more reliable symptom or sign of infestation. Now, they're approximately one-eighth of an inch wide. So if you see other shapes like circles or ovals or big, huge, D-shaped looking things that are, say, half an inch, that is too big to be emerald ashbore or it's just a different Sometimes you'll see a bark crack with a larval gallery. Sometimes you'll see a bark crack with a larval gallery underneath it. And this doesn't happen in every tree, but sometimes it does. This tunneling that you see here can basically kill that area of the living tissue underneath the bark. And when you have living tissue surrounding dead tissue, that living tissue keeps on growing. So it produces wound tissue, like you see here. These lips are basically wound tissue. And the tree is still getting bigger and bigger. And ultimately, you get a cracking of the bark just because there's no living tissue to keep making more bark. So on occasion, you see this, but it's not common. What is actually very common at this time of year and in late winter is our friend, the woodpecker is really the best detector of EAB that we have. We can hang traps with some lures. They're moderately effective. The woodpeckers during the winter, they get kind of hungry, and as they tap around the trees, they figure out that there's a gallery, a hollow area, and they somehow figure out exactly where the larva is underneath the bark, because it's overwintering there. It's dormant. It's not going to crawl away. And they flake off the outer bark, as you see here. They've done that. And when they figure out that there is a larva, they make a bigger sort of pencil-shaped hole, and they drill right down through the bark, and they get that larva. Remember, it's an inch, inch and a half long. It's a nice meal, nice big dinner for a small woodpecker. And they may get a third or half of the larvae inside that tree. And in the meantime, they leave these nice, obvious signs of infestation for us to see in, say, January, February, and March. So they're the best thing we've got. And we can drive around town this time of year and take a look and see if we have this flocking that wasn't there last fall. Now, we also have insects that are often mistaken for emerald ash borer. You've probably heard in the media or seen in the paper or online that it's a green bullet-shaped insect. Well, that's true. It is a green bullet-shaped insect. But we also have other native green bullet-shaped insects here that it really takes an expert to distinguish between that and emerald ash borer. So that's part of my job is to be that person who tells you that, yes, I have emerald ash borer, or no, you have bronze poplar borer, or honey locust borer, or a similar North American cousin of this Asian insect. We get a lot of other insects, as you can see, that are green and often mistaken for EAB. The most common is this critter called the tiger beetle. It's called the tiger beetle because it's predaceous, like the tiger. This is a very green, it's an emerald-green beetle, just like EAB. But it runs around on the sidewalk and the lawn and the driveway during the summer. And because it is a beetle, it's green, same color, people will swear that they have emerald ash borer, but it's actually this other native insect that is actually beneficial. It's a predator, so it's not going to hurt your trees at all. I have a similar picture like this on the table if you haven't got one already. Now, as I had mentioned a couple minutes ago, there are other insects that will infest an ash tree. These are native insects that figure out that a tree is weak, or it's sick, or stressed, and they come in and infest it. They may or may not kill it, but they do infest it. And what you can look at is the exit hole. Notice this one is round and big. You could stick a pencil down that, or a shotgun blast of tiny little round holes, or this one actually makes an oval-shaped hole. You can look at that hole and the gallery underneath if you peel the bark away and identify the problem as being something other than EAB. None of these make a D-shaped hole, and none of these make that S-shaped winding gallery that you would find due to EAB in your ash trees. Now, if you do find insects that you think are EAB, or you have trees that you think have EAB, we would certainly like to know so that we can make maps and plans and encourage others to manage their trees or their forests based on what you find. So if you do think you have it, please report it to the Department of Public Works here in the city. If you're from one of the other communities here in Sheboygan County that doesn't have EAB yet, the easiest way is to report it to the town, or for faster service, report it to the DNR by the emerald ash borer website. We are here to identify insect problems, so we are more familiar with it than many town clerks or small-town staff. UW Extension can also identify specimens. And if you take pictures of your tree or your insect, much like the woodpecker damage, you can often send that to someone like the UW Extension Office here, and Mike Ballig, the Extension Agent, is here, or myself, or to the website, and we may be able to just take a look at the pictures, tell you, yes, that's EAB, or no, it's not, based on the pictures. So that can be a very quick and effective way to make an identification. And it turns out that many, if not most, detections that we make in the communities are actually reported by the homeowner. We drive around and look, but you greatly outnumber us, and we can't get into your backyard as well as you can. Now, one of the issues with emerald ash borer is the decision to treat a tree, or will my tree get infested at all? This insect only infests the true ash species, the white, black, and the green, and the blue, if you happen to live in those couple neighborhoods. Other things like maple, or elm, or even mountain ash are not true ash species, and they are not susceptible. So part of the management of EAB is that identification of your tree, because you don't want to cut down your tree or spend money treating your tree when it turns out that it's an elm. It's not going to get the insect. So proper identification is useful. Ash is one of the handful of tree species that has opposite branching, so sort of like this. Most tree species here have what's called alternate branching, where they're staggered and not opposite each other. So if you have, say, a maple or an elm in your backyard, tomorrow, take a look and not maple, an elm, for example, you'll see that the branching is alternate. And that can be an easy way to screen out your tree species. The mature white ash tend to have these diamond shapes in the bark. Mature green ash is more kind of square or horizontal, cracking, and the ridges, as you can see here, kind of look like plates. I do have the ash identification brochure from Michigan State, which is a very good one, on the table. So if you have any doubts about what your tree is, please take one and try to identify your species. Commonly, people will see these canoe paddle-shaped seeds. That is fairly distinctive for an ash. This is the ash identification guide, which I mentioned. There's plenty of copies on the table. You can also go online and download this off of our state emerald ash borer page. There are other EAB websites available that also have this link. It's a very good one. It tells you how to screen your tree species, and then it has nice pictures of similar species like a box elder, or an elm, or a shagbarck hickory that have somewhat similar leaves. But having a nice picture makes it pretty easy for you. Just to show you ash leaves, here are the green, white, and black ash. They have a number of smaller leaflets. So this whole thing is actually the leaf. These are not technically individual leaves. And they vary, but five to nine is most common. Black ash tends to be most abundant in the wet areas like swamps. It probably is planted in some streets or neighborhoods or backyards, but more commonly, it's a green or a white ash that you'll have in your yard. Here's another picture of similar leaves. Notice that some of them, like the mountain ash or the walnut, just have far more leaflets, and the shape is just different when you look at the pictures of the two. Others like shagbarck hickory or box elder may have a similar number of leaflets, but the shape is just different. So take a look at the guide if you have any questions, and it should be fairly straightforward with a little detective work. Now, as a homeowner, and we're here tonight to really talk about your trees in your backyard or possibly in your woods, you've got several options now that we know that EAB is here. Some people will spend the money to treat the trees with insecticide every year or two, or maybe three years, and the tree should stay alive and healthy. Other people will decide that they don't want to spend this money in perpetuity for the next 30 or 40 years, and they will just plan to cut the tree down at some point and replant it with another species. It's an option. You own the tree, and the decision is ultimately yours. You have different budgets. You have different values for that tree. And budgets and values vary. Yes?
What is the cost of treating it, and how effective is it?
The question is, what is the cost of treating, and how effective? I will show you that in a couple slides. The good news is the price is coming down over time as more people do it and there are more products on the market. I will get, one suggestion we do have is that if you decide to cut the tree down, you will probably save yourself a fair amount of money if you do it while that ash tree is still alive. Once ash trees die, they get very brittle and very dry, and when they fall, they just shatter all over the place, much more than a live ash tree would, which means that it's harder on the equipment, it's harder on the tree service, and there's more cleanup time involved, which means more cost to take that tree down. So removing a live ash is usually suggested, and most homeowners who know that will take the tree down while it's still alive. Now, some homeowners will do that prior to death. Other people will wait until the tree dies, and then they decide to remove it. Ash trees tend to start falling apart within a year of death. So if it does die, be aware that within a year or so, it will start dropping branches and even the parts of the main trunk or bark will start falling off onto whatever you've got underneath that tree. The third option is to treat the tree with insecticide, and that's becoming increasingly common. I will caution you upfront that only ash trees need treatment. Remember, the emerald ash borer only affects ash trees. So if you have elm, maple, box elder, birch, something like that, it does not need treatment for this insect, because it's not going to get infested in the first place. Now, also, something to consider is that not every ash tree needs to be treated or should be treated, because it's got major problems anyways, and you're better off doing something like removing and replacing versus spending the money to treat it, because something else is going to happen to that tree. There are some products that you can buy as a homeowner. You can move down to the garden center or the big-box retailers here in town and buy some of them. Or there are other products which tend to be more potent that only a tree service or a licensed arborist can apply, because they're called a restricted pesticide that you need special certification and licensing to legally apply. So that's another decision for you. Do you want to do it the cheaper homeowner way or the more expensive tree service way? It's up to you. They all have advantages and disadvantages, which I will show you. Another recommendation that we have been pushing for the last 10 years or so is to diversify your tree species. We have a lot of ash in our communities. We have a lot of maple in our communities. Ultimately, or eventually, some new insect is going to get here, because the shipping containers keep coming over here from other continents, and the pests keep coming, hidden inside them. So diversifying your woods or your forest means that if something else gets introduced in five years, you've still got four, or five, or six different tree species there to provide the benefits that your trees are really planted there to do. There are a number of examples that you can see here on the screen behind me. They're a little more exotic or eccentric than you would have planted even 10 or 20 years ago, because we are looking for more and more things to diversify with. Just like when we have our retirement fund, we don't want it all in one stock, because the company might go broke and then we're in trouble. We want to hedge our bets with a diversified mix of tree species or, say, stocks in your retirement fund, because if one goes bad, you've still got the rest of them there. There is a very good information site on our state page or good webpage. You can go to the state website and get more information about what to plant, what's most appropriate for you, based on the climate, soil type, things like that. Mixing it up is good, because more bad stuff is going to get here. There are a number of decision guides for you, and we've got a couple of them here. And as I'd mentioned a couple minutes ago, not every ash tree is going to be saved. Not every ash tree is worth saving, because it's got problems. So I borrowed a guide from the Indiana DNR called the Managing Emerald Ash Borer Decision Guide, which has a very simple step-by-step decision-making process for you to look at and make a decision about whether you want to treat your ash trees or remove them sooner or later. That should be fairly straightforward, and you'll see other examples of pictures of trees that are worth saving versus trees that are not worth saving, which I'll show you in more detail. We do encourage homeowners to consider insecticide treatment for their high-value ash trees, basically, which means the trees in your yard or around your buildings, say, if you have property elsewhere. Anywhere in Sheboygan County at this point, or even in the surrounding counties, this is something that you should consider this spring. Now, if you have ash trees in your woods, you own five, 10, 20 acres somewhere else, this is really not for you, because the cost is just too high relative to the values of those trees. Typically, you would spend, in most cases, you would spend more treating the trees than you're going to get when that tree is turned into lumber. Just doesn't make economic sense. In forests, you manage the forests differently and grow different species, just like you mix up the trees, as I mentioned a couple slides ago. If you do have questions, you're a woodlot owner and you have questions about managing for EAB, give us a call here at the Plymouth DNR office. We have a forester who many of you may work with for managed forest law or other plans. He can give you some advice, and if you're looking for basic forest management or bug advice, I can talk with you as well. Now, to answer your question about the insecticide treatments, there are a number of different products on the market. The number keeps increasing every year, as some of them go off patent, and you can make a generic version, kind of like you can make a generic version of your drugs that you get at the drugstore. They tend to be a lot cheaper, and the price of everything goes down. There are a number of products, and as the DNR, we don't endorse any specific product or insecticide or business. We provide the basic information, and it's up to you to make the decision of what product to use and to hire someone if you want to hire someone. Each of you have different situations. You have different trees of different sizes. They're in different places in the yard. Some are healthy, some are not so healthy. Some of your wallets have plenty of money, some not so much. It will vary, and the decision that you may make is often going to be a different decision than your neighbor would make. The probability of success is not 100% guarantee, but if it's done properly and at the right time, i.e. before the tree's too heavily infested, the odds are very good that you will be able to save that tree over the long term. The most common products or the active ingredients that you'll see are usually, but not exclusively, one of these four. Imidacloprid is a fairly common product, and if you go to the garden center or the big-box store, most of what you'll find has that as the active ingredient. It's actually related to the nicotine in cigarettes. So if they get a little overstimulated and they die if they get this. There is another product or active ingredient called emomectin benzoyate, which people would most commonly know as an insecticide called triage, but there are now several generic varieties as well. Dynotefuran is another chemical insecticide, and azideractin is the active ingredient from the neem tree. So if you're looking for something that is more natural, there is a So if you're looking for something that is more natural, there is a product called Trierzen, which contains this. It's the only one that I know of that has this neem tree extract, and it basically is an extract of an Asian tree that is injected into the tree, and then it kills the larvae, just like the chemicals would. The treatments are required every one to three years, depending on which product you buy, or you hire someone to apply. In general, the ones that are applied every year are cheaper, and I hear numbers of about $4 a diameter inch. So if you had a 12-inch tree, about this big, that would cost you roughly $48 a year to treat. The products that last two or three years are more expensive, and typically, they're about twice the cost, but they provide two or three times the period of protection. So some people will choose to spend less money more frequently, some people will choose to spend more money less frequently. And typically, most of these products are going to be the ones that are called restricted, and you'd have to hire a tree service or an arborist to come in and inject them. I do have the homeowner guide on the table. It lists a number of insecticides that you can buy. The ones that are less harmful if improperly applied are generally the ones that you could go and buy yourself. It's something to consider. Some people will use those only, some people will use them only until the trees start dying in the neighborhood, and then they will hire a tree service to use the more potent products. Some people will go straight to the more potent products. It really varies, and the decision is up to you. I've just attached a sample slide, or picture, of the typical difference in treatment versus not treatment that you would see. What you can see is this was data from another state. The trees that were not treated had about 50% decline, so they looked like that kind of thinning, dying tree I showed a dozen slides ago. The ones that were treated had some level of dieback, but something that a tree can easily handle, and most people or homeowners would not even notice. Whether there's three, or say even a 10% decline, most people don't notice that. The tree doesn't. This is the insecticide guide for homeowners from UW Extension. This is the one that's on the table. You can also get it online at the UW website if you type in Emerald Ash Borer, or go to the State Emerald Ash Borer webpage, and download it, or take a look at it if you want more. I do have extra copies, so if you have a neighbor or relative that's interested, feel free to take one off the table for them. Onto tree service insecticide auctions. As I mentioned, they have products that you can't get your hands on unless you hire them, and there are very good reasons for that in terms of safety and the way they're applied. We do encourage you to check the qualifications and the pesticide licenses of anyone that you choose to hire. EAB has been known to have people come around offering to treat your trees, and they are not licensed, they have no experience, they're not a certified arborist, for example, they're kind of, they're to make a quick buck. So check businesses' qualifications carefully. There are companies here in the Sheboygan area that are able to do these treatments. Companies from other places like the Fox Valley, or Milwaukee, or Green Bay will come here if you are interested. There are also other businesses that you could find under the phone book, or look online, under, say, tree service, or pest control. You would find them appear as well. Yes, Joe?
Bill, I just want to throw out, if a homeowner does choose to work with a tree company in the city of Sheboygan, they need to be permitted through the city of Sheboygan. So you could always call the city office and verify that that business owner is permitted to work in the city. Now, that does not tell you their competency, it just means that they do have a permit to work in this city.
Thank you. For those watching on public access, Joe mentioned that here in the city of Sheboygan, the businesses that are applying pesticide need to have a permit from the city. So you could call the city and check their legitimacy in terms of having that permit. Questions? Yes?
Is there a life cycle that the trees are going to reach that they're going to die anyway?
The question is about the life cycle of a tree? Yes, trees are organisms that have a finite life cycle, and that's one of the things to take into consideration in deciding whether to treat. If you've got a big tree that might live another 50 years and you value it, you may choose to spend the money. If it's already dying and has three more years, would you really spend the money to treat it?
So an ash tree that's 30, 40, 50 years old, where do we, what would you expect a tree like that to live?
The general rule of thumb in a city, say for a street tree or a park tree, that's often about as far as they go. In your backyard, or out in the woods, they may live another 40, 50 years. They can live fairly long if they have a good place to grow, but streets and parks are not often good places for them to grow.
I have one more question. I have two ash trees in the backyard. One of them turns red, they'll just turn a deep red in the fall, you know, leather.
That could be one of several varieties. The autumn purple that you were mentioning is common. Those are varieties of the, general, the white or the green ash. So the stuff that you bought at the nursery, or the previous homeowner bought, probably is susceptible to this insect. So if you value the color, for example, that may be one thing to consider in treating. Yes?
Do you know how much it should cost to cut down one tree still alive?
The question is, how much does it cost to cut down a tree that's still alive? It varies on quite a number of factors. So talk with the tree services, and get several estimates, because the prices or the quotes may vary substantially. I think someone in the back, I'll answer your question.
With the treatments, your pets, your dogs, and your small children right now, is the treatments going to hurt them? Do you have to keep them away from the trees?
The question is, will the treatments hurt kids or pets? Done properly, they should not. Most of, many of the products are actually drilled or injected right into the tree, so there's no real exposure. Some of them that you buy, you mix with water, and you soak around the base of the tree, and you may, or likely will remove some of the leaf litter or the mulch, apply the liquid, and then cover it back up. So there is always a risk of exposure, but it should be mitigated. Some of the products are sprayed right on the tree trunk, or on the canopy of the tree. There is a higher potential for exposure if you've got kids running, or pets running around the yard and jumping up on the tree that's been sprayed. So if that's one thing to consider, is that some people may choose to do a more discreet treatment with one product versus spraying with another. In the back, yes?
I wanted to help answer the ash tree age question gentleman had. There's the Blind Horse Restaurant, has a picture in their restaurant dated 1909, and they have saplings of those three big ash trees they have in their front yard. So that's going on 100-plus years. Now, those might be, you know, they look very nice, and big, beautiful ones. Not same for every tree, but those are going over 100.
Yes?
You take a tree down live, and you have that stump. Is that stump still going to be a problem as far as the Emerald Ash Borer? I noticed the city's taking down trees, but they're leaving stumps.
For public, the public access viewers, the question is, what about the stumps after the trees are cut down? You can actually have Emerald Ash Borer getting into the base of the trunk, and even into the root system, a little ways underground. If they, the eggs are laid on the surface, and the larvae just happen to crawl or tunnel down. Sometimes, the property owner or the city will treat the trees with some kind of herbicide to make sure that it dies. If they don't, they may sprout again. And I know I have a coworker in Michigan who has adult children in the Detroit area, where the ash trees have long since died, but they sprouted back, because the tree may have had food reserves underneath the bark. So you get these stumps that have sprouted a new forest of ash.
Are you suggesting we should take those out?
That is something to consider. Do you want to treat it, or have a stump grinder come in and remove it?
Is the city going to take out the stump?
Let me ask Joe.
We were really hoping to catch up last year. We have, Kenny, 400 stumps out there right now?
472 as of count today. I'm hoping to start in the weather providing and equipment providing.
Kenny said we're hoping to start again in May. We did a pretty good catch-up last year. I just want to throw out, up until about 2013, the city was not removing more than, less than 200 trees a year. And then, due to numerous things, drought, and whatever, root girdling, we've been removing basically about 600 trees a year since. So we were on route to catch up last year, and then we had that storm, and that really, really set us back. Now, again, we have a four-man crew. We're able to give them help every once in a while, but we're trying to complete that. So Kenny, our lead man, has a plan. We caught up huge last year, and we have every intention that by midsummer, we should have those, the stumps out there completed, ground up. So those are our responsibility, and we'll be caught up this year.
And you can hire someone to stump grind as well?
Except the city's.
Yes, on your trees. Yes?
With or without the ash doors, because we don't always know whether they're there. If we cut down live trees, can we burn the wood, or give it to our neighbors to burn, or are we not supposed to do that?
Is there any air law here?
Like Bill said, it's here. So, no, the ash tree, you remove it. It's, especially if it's a good ash tree right now, great, use it, but no. The ash is, the ash borer's all around us, so it was a big thing before. Don't bring it anywhere, don't burn it, just, you know, try to figure out how to get rid of it. Go ahead and burn it. Use it here, use it where you remove it.
If possible, try to keep the wood in the city, because there are places north of here, like Howard's Grove, for example, Southern Manitowoc County may have the insect, but it's not known yet. At least if it stays here in the city, the risk of spread is pretty negligible, because the city already has it. If you cut the tree down and want it for firewood, that you may move somewhere. If you let it sit there for two years, the bugs will cycle through, and then it's just not suitable anymore. So then, there's really no risk of moving it, but it still has to stay in that red area that I showed you earlier.
What does the city do with the trees that they take out? Is that wood available?
That wood is not available. A lot of our branches will be ground, and it's a majority of what makes up a lot of that mulch pile that you'll see at the Department of Public Works, Municipal Service Building. Those are mainly the branches. The other pieces that we have, we do try to get out different ways. They, we bring them out to one farm at this time, and I think they probably kind of turn around and sell them. One of our management plan items is, what can we do with this wood? How can we better turn this wood around? Not looking to make a profit or anything, maybe go to help offset some expenses, but we're going to have a lot more trees coming in now. How do we get rid of those trees? And that's part of the management plan.
Why should you not burn?
Some, I don't live here in Sheboygan County, so I was just making sure that there isn't some sort of city ordinance against burning because of the winter smoke.
Not because of the tree being infected?
No, that will, that's one of the best ways there is to prevent the insects from emerging. Yes, keep it down, keep it down here. And as you saw on that map that I showed you earlier, there's only a few known spots in the north woods, so the longer we can keep it out of the north woods, the better. Okay, just to wrap up with the insecticides, what you'll see is that some companies will have an injector like this, a sort of a big needle that puts the pesticide right underneath the bark. So there is no potential, say for your dog, playing with the pesticide underneath the bark. Some companies spray, and then it gets absorbed through the bark, and goes up the tree, and kills what's inside. And some have a hose and tube system that they kind of pump, or pressurize, and it gets into the inside of the tree that way. So there are companies that have different application methods for the various products, and that's something to consider when deciding to hire someone, is what am I comfortable with? Done properly, they should cause minimal damage to the tree, because the trees can heal those wounds. Here's a good picture of the treatment success from a suburb of Detroit. Same neighborhood, they had been doing some treatments with, I believe, the Imidacloprid products. The tree on the left was one of the controls that was allowed to naturally be infested, and you can see what happened to it. The tree on the right was one of the ones that was treated, and it's a very nice-looking tree. So that, done properly, and early on, that is what you should wind up with if you do the treatments. Yes?
Is there a preferred time of the year? Is it small, cold, wet, or hot weather? Do they make any difference?
The question is about the timing of the treatments. Typically, those are done in the spring. As the trees start becoming active, and they're carrying water up inside the tree, you want to put the pesticide in, and it gets carried up too. So as you'll see on the brochure, or that the insecticide handout, typically, mid-April to mid-May is when you do most of them. Some of them can be done in the fall, and then the pesticide just sits there all winter until it gets carried up again the following spring. Yes?
So is the infestation like a wave, or is it like something permanent? Is there going to be an end point to it? And if we save a tree, and we keep that tree for five years, 10 years, it'll be all right? Or is it a matter of, this is forever?
The question is, what is the future of the EAB infestation? Based upon what we have seen in the other states, like Ohio or Michigan, that have had this for 20 years, probably, say, here in Sheboygan County, it will be a cycle. The first wave that we're going to go through in the next five to 10 years, most, you know, the vast majority of the trees die. The treatment may, and this is May, be able to be scaled back and done less frequently after that happens, but eventually, those young little sprouts and seedlings will grow up to be a size that they can get infested again, and then probably, they will have another wave, and whatever is left will start growing again. So it probably will be a cycle, but you may be able to scale back the treatments. And as I had mentioned earlier, the one-to-three-year treatment cycle may be something that you can scale back to a two-to-four-year cycle. But we have to get through this first wave first. And long-term, how the trees and the bug will kind of interact with each other over the next, say, 200 years, we don't know yet. It just hasn't been present long enough. Other insecticide questions? Good. Okay, so as I had mentioned earlier, some of the trees are worth treating, i.e. the tree on the left, nice tree, on a, it's actually in downtown Green Bay, nice-looking tree, right along the trail, no problems, worth treating. The other tree is not worth treating. In that case, it was just too far, or too heavily infested. As I was saying, if it, generally, about 30% of the canopy is thinning like this, that's really the cutoff to be able to save it. Beyond that, it's too far gone to save. Trees may also have other problems that make them unlikely candidates for insecticide treatment. As you can see, it left, that tree is unbalanced, and eventually, there's going to be a big storm, and it's going to split. So probably, it's not worth treating. It would make more sense to remove that tree and replant with something else that's not susceptible. The tree at the right, you can see, is going to have perpetual maintenance problems, and that would also be an unlikely candidate to treat. There's nobody stopping you from treating if you own those trees, but it's something that would be less likely treated, and more likely removed and replanted with something else that's better suited for that site. And to wrap up, the best way to deal with EAB, as you can see, is not to get it in the first place. So please keep the. So please keep the ash down here and don't take it where the bug is not already present. So with that, I will wrap up, and I'll be around for a while, as will the city staff. If you have any questions, if you think of questions in the next while, give us a call at the Plymouth office or ask one of us. So with that, I will wrap up, and thank you for your interest in Emerald Ash Borer.